Well, hello, everybody. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And we start the evening with an invocation, which we observed by a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and welcome, everybody. Clerk, please call the roll.
Agent.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Annie Keith.
Here.
Nash.
Willetts.
Here.
Weddings.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Next up, we have a request for approval. The meetings, the minutes from our special meeting on the 6th and work session and regular meeting on the 11th.
Madam Mayor, I request approval of the special meeting on April 6th, the work session and the evening session on April 11th.
Second.
We have a motion, a second discussion. Clerk?
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Annie Keith.
Yes.
Nash. Willetts.
Yes.
Weddings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, we have the consent agenda. Excuse me. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen still requests, in which case the item will be moved, removed from the general order business and considered in its normal sequence.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I have one item that I'd like to call up. It's Resolution 204-23. It's for Physical Health Management Services. This facility is in my district. I've toured it before. It's phenomenal what it does for our public safety folks, and I'm just really glad that they continue to serve our employees.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Annie Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Willetts.
Yes.
Weddings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
If I am reading this agenda right, we have no ordinances, so we're going to move in. We have no unfinished business, so we'll move into new business, the purchasing protest. And so RFP 23-78, our Stationless Shared Mobility Services. We'll have, I see on here Bree, but I don't see Bree in person. Okay, all right. So we've got a couple folks from our office, Bree Brush or from the city. Missy. Is it Groot House, Groot Office? Groot House, okay, good. Our Purchasing Manager and Tessa Grigor from our Mobility and Public Safety, Public Services Division, the manager of that. And then Bree Brush is here now from the mayor's office. Well, so we'll hear from the city, and then we'll hear from the protester Bird. All right, Bird's over here. And then we have an intervening party, Neutron Holdings. Is that Lime?
Yeah.
Okay, great. And then a rebuttal from Bird at the end, and then this decision will be before council. And so I'll start with staff and then call you guys up. You don't have to remember that, but I just wanted to walk through it in case people were wondering how it works.
Mayor, members of council, before we begin tonight's presentations, we respectfully ask the council to hold questions until the end of the appeal hearing. My name is Missy Groothouse. I'm the purchasing agent for the city of Boise. Tonight on our agenda, we have an award protest. In our purchasing process, we allow our decisions to be challenged, and tonight we have such an opportunity. RFP 23-078 Stationless Shared Mobility Services was bid on January 11th. The city received four proposals. The committee evaluated those proposals, shortlisted the vendors down to a pool of three, Lime, Spin, and Bird. The city then requested and received product demonstration of each firm's devices. The request for proposal process was used for this procurement, meaning the award decision was not based solely on low dollar, but best value, where evaluators assigned points from criteria in the RFP. The proposals were evaluated by a committee made up of members from the City of Boise Clerk's Office, PDS, Mayor's Office, CCDC, and BSU. As you'll see further on in the presentation, the committee consistently scored Lime the highest. The city posted the intent to award notification on February 23rd. On March 2nd, the city received the protest from Mr. Orr from Bird Rides, the third-ranked firm. And after careful review, we found that our process and evaluations were sound, and we denied the protest. In our response letter, we addressed each of Mr. Orr's concerns and offered the city's appeal process, should he wish to escalate his case to counsel for consideration. This evening, PDS will provide a project overview, and then we will hear from Bird, the third-ranked proposer, and Lime, the highest-ranked proposer. At the end of these presentations, council will be requested to make the award decision. We ask that the decision be based on whether the RFP evaluation committee exercised their discretion in this process in an arbitrary, capricious, or an unreasonable matter. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. As you said at the beginning, my name is Bree Brush. I work in the mayor's office on transportation policy, and I'm joining Tessa this evening to share a little bit more about how we got to this RFP, and I was a member of the evaluation committee. So before Tessa goes into the specifics of the scores of individual proposers, I wanted to share with you that we first started regulating e-scooters and e-bikes in 2018, and under this current framework, we have licensed three vendors, and we also maintain a waitlist should any of our current vendors leave our market. Devices are managed by the clerk's office through a regulatory framework that was set up in Title III, Chapter 14, that establishes a maximum number of devices, defines parking violations, a process for abatement, and reporting requirements for the vendors. Our intended outcome of this RFP process is to select one vendor that can help us develop a new program for shared mobility. By shifting to just one vendor, we can simplify communications and enforcement. We can be more intentional in how these devices are used across our city to supplement our transportation network, instead of seeing them all concentrated mostly in the same area downtown. And we see things like that happen because each vendor will mostly deploy devices based on the highest potential for ridership, as well as connecting to transit, and whatever other factors may be important to their individual company. We issued an RFP consistent with our new program goals, which I'll go into in a moment. But we asked that proposers detail how they would approach a program for Boise with the intent that we'd ultimately enter a contract with one proposer. Here on the screen, you'll see the program goals as stated in our RFP. We want a program that has devices regularly distributed across our city. We want transparent pricing with affordable options to serve low-income residents, and we want to implement strategies that can help us reduce single occupancy vehicle trips. We also want a program that can swiftly address one of our residents' greatest concerns with stationless devices, which is parking. Next, Tessa will share more about individual scores of the vendors.
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Tessa Grigor, and I am the Mobility and Public Spaces Manager in Planning and Development Services for the city. Tonight, I will provide an overview of what we evaluated through this process, the scoring results, Bird's lower scores in comparison to Lime, and finally, the three primary tenants of Bird's protest and what is before you tonight for consideration. As outlined in the RFP, respondents were asked to answer several questions within the 11 categories listed here, ultimately allowing the scoring committee to score each section based on a comprehensive set of factors in alignment with the program goals. In Bird's protest, they contend they should have received higher scores in different categories based on a singular strategy in some cases, for example, the parking category. They felt they deserved a higher score due to their visual parking system technology. In the parking section, respondents were asked to answer seven different questions focusing on providing a comprehensive parking strategy, including a communications plan, how they will incentivize proper parking, and approach to handling complaints. So while Bird may have demonstrated innovative parking technology, technology was only one piece of what we were looking at as far as the evaluation was concerned. The results of the scoring are shown here. Bird was ranked third in the combined scoring both initially, and then, and that was prior to the interviews and the demos, and then third again in the final scoring. In fact, their scores went down in the final scoring largely due to the experience that we had with their devices. I will also note that in the individual scores, only one of seven evaluators ranked Bird first. The other six evaluators rated Lime or Spin number one. In eight of the 11 scoring categories, Bird received a score that was lower than either Lime or Spin. In the six categories listed here, Bird received the third lowest score. I will touch on each and where Bird fell short in comparison to Lime, and why ultimately Bird was not ranked number one or even number two, and why the committee did not feel that their proposal was the best fit for the city. Regarding fleet information, Bird received a higher fleet score initially. However, following the device demonstration, Bird's scores went down. Ensuring devices are safe, accessible, and comfortable is essential to the program, and in our experience, we found that bikes were not designed to fit all adult riders. In fact, the bikes were too big for two of our employees to ride. Further, the devices did not provide a comfortable riding experience in comparison to Lime or Spin, and we had safety concerns when learning that the brakes on the bikes were installed backwards from what is typical in a U.S. market. Regarding geographic distribution for reduction in vehicle miles traveled, this section had the most available points assigned to it to ensure the shared mobility program supports the city's goals in providing mobility options and reducing dependency on cars. Bird's fleet distribution proposal and their strategies for promoting mode shift through the program were not as comprehensive or data-driven as Lime's. Lime included specific strategies for ensuring first mile, last mile connectivity to transit. They specified metrics for device placement along transit corridors, in activity centers, and in equity zones, and they demonstrated a commitment to other innovative campaigns and incentives, such as discounts on poor air quality days and for trips taken near bus stops, as well as promotion through their partnership with Uber. We considered various equity factors to support a program that is affordable and accessible to all across our community. Bird's Low Income Access Program provides 50% discounts on rides, while Lime committed to 70% reduced rates and will make it easier for people to gain access to this reduced rate through a direct enrollment program with community organizations. Both Bird and Lime speak to deploying devices in equity areas. However, Lime committed to device deployment metrics and will offer 50% off rides starting in those areas, while Bird's approach was general and only committed to 25% off rides starting in those areas. We also appreciated Lime's Assist Program, which will provide adaptive devices at no charge to community members on request. Lime presented a comprehensive safety and education plan and a robust set of educational strategies and technologies to promote safe riding and prevent unsafe riding. A few strategies that stood out above and beyond Bird's proposal include: they will be hosting a Lime and Learn Community Hub, where community members can stop in for information and for demos; helmet selfie incentives through the app, noting both, like Bird, Lime will be providing free helmets as well; cognitive tests to prevent impaired riding at night; and app technology to detect and ultimately prevent sidewalk riding and tandem riding. Regarding maintenance, cleaning, charging, and disposal, a key difference was that Lime's scooters include swappable batteries, and Bird's do not. This reduces the need to transport scooters to charge them, also a key consideration from an efficiency, sustainability, and safety standpoint. And in addition, unlike Bird, Lime's device maintenance will be performed exclusively by W2 employees and will be conducted in their already established maintenance facility off of Coal Road. In the staffing section, Bird, unlike Lime, did not specify the exact number of employees they will have for the Boise program, and they propose a significant number of devices, which we want to ensure includes appropriate staffing levels. Further, Bird does not hire W2 employees to manage and maintain the fleet, a commitment we appreciated in the other proposals. Finally, financial relationship with the city and fee structure. While Bird argues they should have received a higher score in this section due to their proposed financial commitment to the city, a big piece of what was evaluated in this section was fair pricing, transparency, and affordability for the community. Bird presented a fair range of 39 cents to 45 cents per minute for all devices. Lime committed to 36 cents per minute, with the adaptive fleet being free for all users. With this price difference, a 30-minute ride could cost a user almost $3 more. Further, we were impressed by Lime's commitment to low-income access programs and the pricing structure, which they further detailed in this section, along with innovative programs and discounts to further align with the city's goals. Bird's protest includes three primary arguments. You've received this information in your packets, but I want to make sure to focus on what Bird is contending as the basis for this appeal and what is before you tonight for decision. Bird asserted the city scored the RFP proposals based on empty promises and exaggerated performance commitments, and that we did not take into account past performance. First, the purpose of the RFP process is to evaluate information provided during the RFP process and not past experience with vendors. It is intentionally designed that way to ensure a fair and unbiased evaluation and selection process. Considering any previous experience outside of what is included in the proposals would create an unfair advantage to companies that have operated in Boise, and not all respondents have had that opportunity. Second, if Bird had wanted to request a modification to the evaluation process, they would have needed to notify the city no less than three days prior to the proposal opening date. This was not done. Third, to Bird's argument that Lime's proposal is full of promises and exaggerated performance commitments, the proposals are signed by the company as verification of the information they are providing and acknowledged the proposal will be used as the basis for the contract we establish with the selected vendor. Further, the evaluation team conducted an independent and collective review of these proposals and did not feel that any commitments that were made were beyond the scope of restability. Second, Bird identified several categories in which they felt they were mis-scored and re-scored their own proposal, concluding they should have received the top score. The reason we have a diverse evaluation committee and process is to conduct a fair, reasonable assessment of the information that has been presented during the RFP process. As mentioned previously, across seven evaluators, Bird was scored highest by only one evaluator, and collectively, Bird was squarely third in both the preliminary and final scoring. The categories in which Bird contended they were mis-scored are listed here. In the interest of time, I will not go through all of these, but will reiterate a couple points. For the fleet, Bird contends that because two evaluators assigned Bird's scores that were significantly lower than the other evaluators, that the evaluators misunderstood or misinterpreted the scoring for this section. In fact, Bird's fleet scores were lowered because of the experience some evaluators had with their devices during the demonstration. If the bikes don't fit, that's a major concern for ensuring an equitable, safe, and comfortable fleet for our community. In other categories, Bird feels they should have scored higher due to one aspect in their proposal in that section. For example, parking technology or their financial offer to the city, which they felt was superior to other respondents. As we acknowledged previously, the evaluation committee was tasked with scoring each category based on multiple factors. The presence of one unique factor, whether or not it was superior to the other respondents, would not alone justify a top score. Finally, Bird raised three allegations of specificities they felt were missing from Lime's proposal. Upon our internal review, we did not find that there was any evidence to support those allegations, and even if there were, the city reserves the right to waive any such irregularities in the proposals. Upon review of the process and arguments presented by Bird, staff firmly believes that Bird has failed to demonstrate that we acted in an arbitrary or unreasonable manner or that we did not appropriately follow the procedures as outlined in the RFP, relevant code, and as communicated to respondents. We firmly believe the procurement and evaluation processes and scoring were conducted to standard in a fair and reasonable manner, and believe Bird did not present the best proposal for our community. Bird is asked that they be awarded a second contract alongside Lime. We strongly believe this is not the best approach for the city and would ultimately change the nature of the proposed programs, given they would no longer be granted an exclusive agreement. And further, if we were to award a second contract, Spin would be the likely recipient, given they ranked second behind Lime throughout this process. Thank you for your time, and we'll stand for any questions.
Any questions?
Madam Mayor, I guess just one clarifying question. So I believe staff presented to city council, it was either two or three times. And I think the instructions that council gave to staff was to have an RFP process for one service provider because of issues that we had had with multiple service providers, and we've kind of gone through a list of those reasons. And I think I'm remembering that correctly. Is there anything in there that says that we would consider to or that we had given direction to consider to?
Madam Mayor, Council pro tem, we came to you in October of last year, and Director King presented all of the reasons why that we felt like moving to one vendor was going to be the best approach for our micro-mobility program. In the RFP, we state that our intent is to select one operator, but we reserve the right to select two. That is standard language in RFPs and in the procurement process, so that we have that ability if it is warranted.
Thank you.
For the questions? All right. So now we will hear from Bird. Go on up. You can use this microphone here. This one here. Yeah.
Hi.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you. So before my time starts, if it's okay, I would
It depends. But for real, because we're sicklers on time.
Okay, I just wanted to point out that Jason Orr, corporate counsel who was referenced earlier, flight was delayed earlier. He's actually en route, so he may be joining us either while I'm speaking or during the rebuttal part later.
Sure, and that's fine. He can't come up and say more if your time's up, but he can join you during rebuttal or anytime.
New guy that wanders in, he's with us.
That's great. Yeah, okay. Hopefully, or I could just take any guy and let him come up.
I mean, depending on what he has to say.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. And then, my name is TJ Burkle, Senior Manager of Government Partnerships for Bird. This is Michael Covato, Director of Government Partnerships for Bird. As mentioned, Jason Orr will hopefully be joining us at some point this evening. And I would also ask if someone could, I'd like to, we'd like to reserve roughly three minutes for rebuttal, so I don't know if there's anyone
There's a clock right there.
Could, okay, great. Okay, great. Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to the council for its careful consideration of this matter and for your support of micro-mobility in Boise over these last several years. Bird is a long-serving provider of micro-mobility services that has operated in Boise since 2018. Again and again, we have heard from city staff and community stakeholders that Bird offers the best service, the most responsive to city requests, and is the most engaged in the community. That's why we were so shocked not to be selected for the upcoming program term and why we're fighting so hard to continue serving Boise. We believe errors were made in the selection process, which I will get into shortly. But fundamentally, we believe Boise would be better served with multiple micro-mobility operators. We are not asking this body to choose Bird over Lime. We are simply asking you to allow Bird to continue serving the city alongside Lime, which council has the authority to do, because we believe that will ensure the success of the city's micro-mobility program. The first problem with the selection committee's decision is that they didn't consider their own experience in working with these operators. The selection committee was made up of people who helped administer the city's original micro-mobility program. There was a reason these people were chosen. They had knowledge and expertise that could inform their decision-making. We've worked with many of these people over the years and have a tremendous amount of respect for their work. But when it came time to evaluate proposals, the selection committee members were asked to set aside their knowledge and experience and instead made a decision blind, based solely on what was on paper. As a result, they showed no skepticism toward whatever promises or commitments were put into the proposals. And here, there was good reason to be skeptical. Over the past several years, no other operator in Boise came close to the level of community investment and support that Bird has demonstrated. If you look at the RFP proposals, you'll see that Birds is the only one with photos of our people holding events in Boise. That's because we're the only operator that has actually been present on the ground in the community. Community organizations backed this up. They said they have not seen the same level of engagement, and in some cases, no engagement whatsoever, from Lime and Spin. In light of these differences in who kept their promises over the past several years, selection committee members should have been allowed to think critically about the commitments they saw on paper and the likelihood of those commitments being realized. According to the purchasing agent, they were not. What the purchasing agent has said is that if Bird wanted past performance considered, we should have objected to the selection criteria at the start of the RFP process. But nothing in the RFP suggested that the selection committee couldn't use their common sense and personal experience in evaluating proposals. Frankly, the purchasing agent's vision for the selection process, which means accepting as true every far-fetched claim in everyone's written proposal, is in no way, is no way for the city to arrive at the best decision. It's a recipe for disappointment. As the final arbiters of this appeal, I urge you all to reject that vision and not to repeat the mistakes of the selection committee. You'll soon hear from Lime, and I'm sure one of the things they'll say to you is, we really mean it this time. And maybe they do. But the city is still better off hedging against the risk of broken promises by having two operators whose very presence will help keep the other accountable. Second, the next problem with the selection is that the committee mis-scored Bird's application. Based on the scorecards that we received, Bird needed 40 additional points across the seven evaluators to be the highest-ranked operator. As we outlined in the original protest letter and in our appeal, we contend that Bird is eligible for at least 40 additional points spread across the categories of parking, equitable distribution and access, marketing and promotion, safety and education, and financial relationship with the city. As evidenced by the city's presentation, there's a lot of information here. We'll try to touch on several of the high points in the scoring section. First, on fleet information, two scorers had Bird significantly lower than the others. One at three out of 10 versus a high score of 10 out of 10. This is not a normal discrepancy among judges. Imagine if at the Olympics, a gymnast did a routine and three judges gave a 10, a 9, and a 2. Something's wrong with either the scoring criteria, excuse me, something's wrong. Either the scoring criteria allowed decisions that were totally arbitrary or some of the judges didn't understand the criteria. With regard to the city's critique that the Bird bike did not fit all adult riders, no bike will fit everyone. Having multiple bikes of different sizes would be a benefit for the program because it would allow more people to find a good fit. What we've heard from riders is that they consistently find our vehicles to provide a more comfortable ride. And time and again, in the design of both the Bird 3 scooter and the Bird bike, Bird has erred on the side of emphasizing safety over everything else.
I just got a question. I'm not voting, but I'm super curious about this one. I mean, I use your scooters. They fit me, but I wasn't a judge. So you're saying that because I'm short, if I ranked your bikes lower because I can't get on them, something's wrong with me?
No, I'm not saying that at all.
So, but you were saying that if you use the gymnast model, something's wrong with the judge that gave such a different score.
I think what we're trying to say here is that you have a wide range of bikes now available. If you select two operators, some might be more applicable.
Oh, but right, but the RFP was one. So I want to get back to the statement you made about the gymnast and the scorers of the gymnast. Something was wrong with the score.
No, no, we're not suggesting that at all. We think the fact that there were a couple that were significantly lower, that there was more than one that was significantly lower than what the high scorers were. We think that's suggestive of, we didn't see that in every section of the RFP, and so we think that's a suggestion of perhaps
Was that, was that the
Some level of discrepancy.
I'm going to ask staff, what section was that? Was that the fit section? I mean, my husband's 6'5". He might give you a 10. I'm 5'1". Can't get on the bike.
We're not suggesting that the only reason for the score was the not being able to fit on the bike. Where, so that my, the first section was not related to the bike in particular, but I'm now responding to the bike section from what the city staffers said, if that makes sense.
What section was that?
Madam Mayor, that was in the fleet information section, where operators are asked to describe their fleet in detail. And evaluator three, myself, gave a score before the demos. And then after the demos, I lowered my score to three out of 10 because I'm five feet tall and I couldn't safely mount the bike. I tried several times.
Thanks. Go ahead.
So we were highlighting, again, what we thought was an abnormal discrepancy among judges, not solely because of the bike issue. I just want to clarify that. Yeah, okay, thank you. In any event, in the parking section, Bird's visual parking system far exceeds the accuracy and quality of any other operator's parking compliance system. Bird has excelled in all of these metrics according to Boise staff, and evaluators agreed that Bird had superior communications and outreach when the marketing, excuse me, when scoring the marketing and promotion category. DPS creates the strongest incentives and allows the most precise reporting of parking violations. In the section of equitable distribution and access, Bird was the only operator to offer free ride credits, and its holistic credit and discount package met or exceeded the value of other proposals. Moreover, Bird offered a comprehensive marketing plan that would ensure qualifying individuals actually took advantage of these discounts. These are all areas of strength for Bird. The city has not explained how Bird's The city has not explained how Bird's deployment plans are lacking, and it did not take into account the value of free ride credits in favoring higher reduced rates for some users. In the marketing, promotion, and safety education sections, marketing, promotion, and safety education should receive similar scores because they overlap greatly and involve many of the same actions. Yet Bird's score for safety and education was low despite its score for marketing and promotion being the highest of all operators. Bird's steadfast commitment to the community should not be irrelevant here. That is the difference between, on the one hand, a meaningful promise, and on the other hand, words on paper. And finally, with respect to the financial relationship with the city and fee structure, Bird unequivocally offered the highest value in financial program fees. We offered $100,000 in the first year and $50,000 each year thereafter, coupled with a 25 cent per ride fee. Let's see, Bird's combined program fee and revenue sharing would provide $200,000 to $250,000 each program year. The next highest scored, scoring offering was Spin's $120,000 per year. I would note here that Lime's portion was redacted, but Spin received the highest score in this section. So we don't know for sure, but we can only assume that Spin had a higher offering than Lime in this regard. Bird's prices were slightly higher, but they were offset by ride credits and discounts. And I would note here, we are willing to match Lime's proposed price of 36 cents per minute if allowed to continue operating in Boise. Bird's combined community investments from credits and discounts to incentives and special events are worth millions to the city. And I'll end with this. Bird has earned the opportunity to continue serving Boise. The RFP makes clear that this council is authorized to award more than one contract, regardless of any decision made by the selection committee or purchasing agent. We are asking you to award Bird a contract as a second operator in Boise, both to reward our investments in this community and to ensure that the city has a successful micro mobility program. With only one operator, city residents will lose consumer choice and optionality. Without competition, Lime is likely to continue its lack of engagement in Boise. You can control that risk by adding Bird as a second operator. And choosing Lime as the only operator for the city of Boise, the city would be choosing the only micro mobility operator that does not belong to the Boise Metro Chamber of Commerce, as well as the operator with the least amount of engagement in the community to date. Earlier today, Bird shared with you letters of support from the Boise Metro Chamber of Commerce, the Downtown Boise Association, the Idaho Retailers Association, the Idaho Restaurant and Lodging Association, Boise Pride, and the Idaho Steelheads. Every single one of these organizations want Bird specifically to stay in Boise, and they say so in their letters. In this instance, we strongly believe that more is better. By including Bird in your program, you accept our commitment to invest millions of more dollars in this community over the next five years. By including Bird in the program, you also save a local business, an independent logistics company that acts as Bird's fleet manager. Earlier today, we sent you a letter from this fleet manager as well, and I'll read you an excerpt from that. Working with Bird has taken me and my family of five from a 400 credit score with a two-bedroom apartment into a much better life. We are in the process of saving for a home, and our credit is over 600 now. We live in a home, and my kids all have their own rooms. During peak season, I have been able to help a friend who was down on his luck with a job, as well as helping a retired Navy veteran with some extra income. I love my experience in Boise and hope that we can continue to grow within the community, end quote. Bird is the only company of the three that has approached the opportunity to operate in Boise for what it is these last several years, a responsibility and a privilege. We want to stay, and we believe the people of Boise will benefit from us staying. Thank you.
We reserve the remainder of our time for rebuttal.
Oh, is that what you meant? I thought you wanted a warning with three minutes. We don't add time to rebuttal. And this is a, this is an appeal process, and if I said yes to you, every time there's a development appeal that's before me, we have to do the same thing. That's, we stick to the rebuttal times, and you can use this time now.
I see.
Okay, you don't have a designated rebuttal time.
Designated for after Limes.
Right, I know what rebuttal is, but I thought that you had rebuttal time programmed in, but it sounds as though you had 15 minutes total to talk to us tonight. So you're, you're saving this time for your rebuttal. If you use it, you'd have no rebuttal. That is, that is, okay, great. I thought you were asking me to add this to your regularly scheduled rebuttal time. Gotcha. Okay, then we're good. If it was pre-arranged, then you've got four minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Any questions?
I do have a question. I want to suss out more clearly your first argument, which pertains to, there's differing views on to what extent your involvement with the community was or wasn't considered and should have been considered. So I'm going to be frank, here's how I see it, and you can tell me why I'm wrong, if I'm wrong. You have some established history in the community that you feel wasn't considered properly. One view is that could have been a metric in the list of factors, but it wasn't. And so your deadline to object to that passed long ago. Another view, and I think it's the one that, that you say in your papers here, is we have a long history in the, in the community. Although that's not any one of the weighted factors, your city's experience with us should lead you to skepticism about my competition. Is that roughly it?
I think we would say the city's experience to date would hopefully, we hope you would rely on that, both on evaluating Bird and the competition, I guess is the way to say that.
So yeah, so here's where I get stuck. Let's say we have a long history with you, and we love you, and you've been amazing, and you come as a very credible person. That doesn't tell me anything about whether Lime is credible or whether the statements in their submissions are credible. And so what I hear, and this is what I want you to respond to, because it's going to affect how I vote, really, what I hear is you saying, I think that there are misleading or wrong or overblown statements in my competition submission. Your history and experience with us should cause you to be, to be skeptical of some of those statements, and the committee didn't do a good enough job, sort of, you know, weighing my history to come to skepticism about this other application. So my question is, why is your history with us material or relevant or helpful in figuring out whether they have made true and accurate statements in their submissions?
Again, I think we're the only operator who has walked the walk.
I'm going to, I need you on the mic, just so we've got a record. Thanks.
Apologize. I think we're the only operator who has walked the walk. You heard my colleague TJ Burkle here mention these letters of support that we've received from these local organizations, which speak to the fact that we are investing in the community and continue to do so, not for the purposes of winning an RFP, but for the purposes of actually being contributing community members. Certainly, I think there is a difference in terms of who approaches this, as TJ mentioned, as a privilege and a responsibility versus a business opportunity.
That didn't answer my question. Here's why. If you were going to walk the walk, and that was an important factor, then it should be one of the things in this list. And so if we're going to draw on our experience with you to conclude these people have walked the walk, how does that get us to any conclusion about whether what they've said is reliable? Because that's what you're saying. You're saying there's overblown statements all over the place. You should have, you know, you should have.
I'll ask you to go through me, so we can keep this orderly.
Sorry, sorry. Let me, let me slow down. You're, you're saying that there's overblown statements in the submissions from the other side that should have been viewed with more skepticism. And your argument for that is you are credible and have been here for a long time. And I don't understand why those are related at all, unless what you're really saying is our history should have been one of the elements you scored on expressly. That's where I'm really stuck, and that's why.
So, I'll give you one example.
Will you come through?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, one example. Lime announced their partnership with the Boise Women's and Children's Alliance in late December, two weeks after the RFP had been released. We would suggest that's pretty opportunistic. Conversely, as compared to Bird, one example is we've been a multi-year sponsor of Boise Pride. So I think, I think what we would suggest is our commitment and investment in the community goes back much deeper than just when convenient for a competitive RFP.
If I may, through you, Madam Mayor, to the councilman's point, there is nothing, again, as we stated, that said that the individuals on the scoring committee could not use their common sense in terms of evaluating the veracity of some of the claims that were made in our competitors' RFPs based on the historic experience, considering they were also operating during the same periods as we were. Certainly, I think where we have, the disparity is not necessarily that this was not a specific element of the RFP, but that perhaps there wasn't some of the, the critical analysis or critical review of some of the claims that were made in our competitor's submissions.
Is there any more follow-up?
Yeah, I guess maybe just to put it in the back of your mind for rebuttal, I still don't understand why taking as a given that you're a super credible operator, and you've been great, and you're awesome, accepting that argument, why that throws any shade on them, why that should lead me to any conclusion about whether their statements are true or not. I don't see him as, the string between them doesn't connect in my mind. So you can chew on it, and if you think it's worth bringing up in rebuttal, you can, and if you don't, that's okay.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, thank you. First of all, thank you for being a contributor to Pride for multi-years. Thank you for being a member of the Chamber of Commerce. Those are both organizations that we support here at the city of Boise. So one of the reasons why we're doing this process is because we actually haven't had a great past experience with any of our providers. And we've consistently gotten complaints and issues, not with just one company, but with all of the companies. Knowing that we still wanted to have micro mobility in Boise as a tool that we would use, one of the things that we did, both me personally and both our staff, is that we, we looked to hire resources. We went to conferences, we talked with experts on how we can try to do this a little bit better and how we can do this right. And the consistent feedback that we got, in addition to feedback from our planning, our new planning director, who wasn't part of those, came in from an outside area, was that it's going to be much more advantageous if you go with a single partner in RFP process that really enables you to have a relationship where there's one person solely responsible for the issues that you're facing. And so now you're coming to us, and you're saying that, no, we actually think that it would be better if there were two providers. So can you make an argument to me on why the information that we've been given from other folks, that a one provider in this RFP system is not as good as having the two? Through you, Madam Mayor.
Keep everything orderly, so people aren't firing questions at each other.
Absolutely. In answer to your question, I think it holds each operator accountable when there is a second provider. Certainly, there's nothing wrong with being an exclusive provider. However, I do think that in Boise's specific case, there is advantage to having two, considering, again, we believe that we have shown our investment into the community and can now ensure that everybody is held accountable to the same standards that we have held ourselves to.
Madam Mayor, oh, go ahead.
I don't want to, I don't want to speak for city staff, obviously, but the RFP certainly contemplated considering more than one operator, and also noted that the council, you know, had the authority to add additional operators as well.
And Madam Mayor, just to follow up there, so I think what you're telling me is the aspect of competition is what makes a two provider better than a one provider scenario?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Thanks for, I'll echo my colleagues' praise of all the things you do in the community, and we appreciate it, and we want, we want companies to be partners with us. So I'm going to ask this question, and so you know, I have 20 years of RFP experience with government. I do this for a living. If the RFP did not align to your strengths, why did you not protest the criteria?
I think we would say, I don't, I don't believe we would agree that it did not align to our strengths, and I think that's outlined in our taking issue with multiple sections in the scoring section.
Do you have anything, anything else to add? Okay, no, thank you. Council, Council President, you good? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next we'll hear from Neutron Holdings. Lime, okay. So I just want to check in with count process. 15 minutes, there's no rebuttal on their part, so use it or lose it now, is I guess what we're doing tonight. All right, great, thanks.
Definitely. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Hayden Harvey. I manage government relations across Pacific Northwest at Lime, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to be here with you guys today. You'll find my comments to be rather brief. Lime and our employees here in Boise are proud to serve this city since the very first pilot in 2018. Since then, our riders have covered just shy of 900,000 miles through your city. In his letter dated the 29th of March of this year, Birds Counsel Mr. Orr and tonight, Mr. Burkle, questioned my company's commitment to this community. Our commitment to Boise has been well documented in the press, but I'll happily share just a few recent examples. Last month, we discounted all rides through the city in direct partnership with the Tree Fort Music Festival to encourage visitors and residents to get around car-free and increase throughput through the downtown core. We were able to reduce over 1,200 car trips over that weekend. This coming weekend, we'll be working with our friends at the Idaho Botanical Garden, Treasure Valley Canopy Network, and Lost Grove Brewing to provide discounted rides for folks headed to Shade City Brew Fest, so they can get there without a car. Our staff will also be on-site to ensure our orderly deployment. This summer, we'll be holding First Ride Academies every other weekend at the Boise Farmers Market. At First Rides, we get folks on our bikes and scooters for their first time. We sign them up for any of the discounts that they might be eligible for. We give them a helmet for their next ride with Lime. We're looking forward to working with Boise's Agency for New Americans, as Ms. Greger pointed out, to hold special First Ride Academies where we get folks enrolled in our Lime Access Program, which is a reduced fare program. That way, folks new to Boise can get to and from work, healthcare, and access services while they settle in here. Finally, next week, employees across our warehouses across the Western United States, from Phoenix to Seattle, will wear denim in support of our Lime hero partner, WCA, the Women and Children's Alliance. April 26th is Denim Day, a day-long visibility and awareness campaign held annually by WCA to bring awareness and support to survivors of domestic violence. We'll also begin sharing WCA's awareness messaging with active Lime users throughout the Treasure Valley starting tomorrow. As you can see, we have invested time and resources, not just in working to understand how we can best serve the city, but also in creatively and effectively giving back to the Boise community. We have very intentionally forged long-term relationships with organizations that make real impact in this community. Lime's past, present, and future, as outlined in our proposal, is informed by community and centers a more connected future for all Boiseans. I very much look forward to working with our community partners and the city for as long as we have the privilege to serve Boise. The truth of the matter is, we are here tonight because of an all-too-common tactic in which Bird calls into question the hard work of staff and evaluators using aspirational and unfounded self-scoring to bargain, some may say intimidate, its way into a market for which it was not selected. Lime's selection was made according to longstanding processes and regulations per the city code and the Business Operations Manual, the same way as much of the innovative development and procurement undertaken by the city in recent years. It will come as no surprise to any of you that we affirm the city's decision and confirmation in Exhibit H of your packets, that this selection was not made in some sort of misinterpretation or misunderstanding by the highly qualified selection committee. The notion that aspirational self-scoring ought to usurp methodical evaluation by a qualified and impartial committee is in direct conflict with the policies and regulations of the city of Boise. I ask that you vote tonight to affirm the decision of the selection committee and staff. Thank you, and I'll stand for questions.
Madam Mayor, thank you. I don't, I can't catch his name.
Hayden Harvey.
Madam Mayor, Hayden, could you quantify the monetary value of an exclusive contract with the city?
Could you quantify the monetary value of an exclusive contract with the city?
For the city? We plan to invest $12 million over the three-year period. Through hardware, staffing, community engagement, facilities, rent, all, all sorts of things like that.
Madam Mayor, Hayden, I guess what I'm looking for is what type of revenue do you anticipate from an exclusive contract with the city?
We'll be sharing 10 cents per trip with the city as outlined in our proposal.
Madam Mayor, Hayden, how much money, how much revenue will Lime receive from an exclusive contract with the city?
I don't actually have an answer for you tonight.
Sir, you'd said that you, you plan to invest 3 million in the next couple of years? I'm sorry?
12.
12 million?
Yes.
In the next couple of years?
Three years.
Would you commit to doing that, or is it just a plan?
We did.
Like, like you'll commit to us here that you're going to spend that money in Boise?
Yeah, it's, it's in the press.
Great.
Yeah.
Do you want to, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, do you want to respond to? The other side's argument that statements in your proposal were exaggerated or overblown? Or that you're kind of a Johnny come lately who's making promises you don't intend to, to, to match up? Because I see it as this really, this credibility issue. That they're saying you're not credible and obviously you're saying you are. Do you want to respond directly to that argument because it's their lead argument?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'd argue 900,000 miles through your city is a commitment.
Thank you.
Anything further?
Thank you.
All right, thank, thank you. Okay, now we're back up Bird with, is it Mr. Orr this time around? Justin? Jason, sorry. Um, we will put the clock at four minutes.
Okay, I don't think I'll need four minutes, Madam Mayor, but I'm happy to entertain any more questions that you or anyone else will have. I'd like to start by just saying that I'm not here to intimidate you or anyone. I don't think that's our strategy as a company. Bird asserts our rights. When we feel that there is reason to. And that's why we're here today. We're here because Boise is important to us. That's why we're here today. You know, we have three of us here fighting to stay in this community because of our longstanding connection here. We've been here since 2018. We have the deepest community, community ties of any of the operators that. That submitted proposals to this RFP. To answer maybe more directly the council member's question, why? What, or what are we saying, you know, if, if Bird is good, how does that mean Lime is bad? To answer your question, I mean, Lime's been here four years. They've had four years to demonstrate commitment to this community, to invest in this community, to form partnerships in this community. They, they said they would do things before, they didn't. So when it comes time to win an RFP, they shower you with promises. But will they keep them now? I hope they will, and then maybe they will. I mean, I've, I'm, that's not under my control, but who is going to keep them accountable? What, what you heard is that perhaps it's better to have one operator. But if you remove Bird. You'll be left with Lime. And then if they don't live up to their promises. What do you do then? You can kick them out, you can, you know, then you'll be left with no one. So that, that is one of the main reasons we think it would be better to have two operators here in Boise. Because that would keep both participants accountable to the promises that they've made. It creates a better program overall for the community residents. You know, I guess I'll point to some of the language that was said by Lime. Because I think it's indicative of, of the experience here in Boise, and they talk about discounts that they, they started last month. They talk about, you know, things that are coming this weekend, things that they're going to launch next week. But they didn't launch it, they could, they could have done it earlier, right? In, in 2022, Lime was using older generation models, you know, first generation, kind of a, you know, old vehicles. Right up until the RFP, but Bird brought you the Bird 3, the, the latest model that we had. Because we've been bringing you the best, and that's been our approach to this market since day one. Now, I think that's, that's all that I wanted to say in rebuttal. But I'm, again, I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Madam Mayor, I, I'll ask that it, I put your colleague in a really unfortunate position where he was pinch hitting and filling in, and then I asked my questions, and now you're here trying to answer them. So let me, let me try to ask you just directly. I understand your argument that you've been here a while and have been a great community partner. And I understand your argument that they haven't, in your view, been as good a partner. That many things that they've done have come right around the time of the RFP, and then in your view, that's suspicious. But what your. Letter to us says is our long history and our good performance and good relationships in the city of Boise. Are evidence that you shouldn't believe their promises and their commitments, and that's the part I didn't understand. And here's the reason I didn't understand it, because I think you'd agree that it just on its face. Long history or engagement with the community would seem like it should be an evaluation criteria. And if you have an objection to it not being part of that criteria, you had a deadline to make that objection, so it's long gone. So. Help me understand what your letter says, which is, we've been here a long time and done a good job being a community partner. Therefore, you should conclude that they won't, that those are the, I, I can't put both thoughts on the billboard in my brain at the same time.
Yeah, so the logic is this, it's not that we want there to be, we don't have any objection to the scoring criteria. We thought they were good enough criteria, and that's why we didn't object early in the process. And in fact, we think all of those scoring criteria play to our strengths as a company, which is why we're surprised that some evaluators did not. You know, score us consistently with what we've learned from, you know, agency staff and community organizations and such. To, to answer your question. Our argument is. That when you have this experience and the selection members. Were all kind of, the selecting, sorry, excuse me. The selection committee members were selected to be part of that committee. Because they had experience with administering the scooter program. And so they weren't just, you know, random community members, they were the experts here. Who had knowledge and experience dealing with these companies and knowing how micro mobility works. And yet, when it came time to actually score. These proposals, they were asked to set aside that knowledge and experience. They weren't allowed to kind of just know in, in, you know, to trust their instincts and, and their experience of who has kept their promises. Who has been here in the community? You know, everybody now for the RFP response is going to say, I'll be there for you, but who has been? And that's the difference. When we say that Bird has been a, a community partner in, in the community of Boise. That, that's what I'm talking about, is that we have lived up to our commitments for over four years. And, and the other operators haven't. And so the selection committee member should have taken that into account, not as some. I, I forget how many scoring criteria there were, but not as a separate criterion, but just. Using their common sense and judgment in thinking about. The promises on paper.
Okay, I think I, I think I understand the point you're trying to make. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Excuse me for being flustered. I literally just got here from the airport.
We're glad our airport is so close. We got to see you.
Me too.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to ask a similar question that I asked from your colleagues a little bit earlier. We received a lot of input prior to making the decision to moving to one carrier, that one carrier would give us a better result than what we had been getting. Which I think was dissatisfaction by a lot of folks in the community about the way a micro mobility, micro mobility was going to that point. And I think that we had issues that were raised about every single one of our providers. And so. I'm trying to understand how. Moving to two isn't just going to have the same problem that we ran into before. Our goal here is to get to a better solution. Three wasn't working for us. Our hope is that we can get to one with a really good RFP and a really good partnership. It seems like you're telling us that like. Lime's not going to do a very good job anyway, so we're going to, we're going to be the good partner in this situation. Make a, make a case to me why two is better than one in this situation, and why we're not going to run into the same issue that we ran into with three.
Well, first, we are going to be a good partner, but second. What, uh, the, the reason you want more than one operator is because it helps hold the others accountable. I mean, candidly, Bird is a better company for having Lime's competition. Micro mobility is a young industry. It's a work in progress. And yes, we're still working out some of the kinks. That's true, as you've heard for, for all of the operators. There are issues and we're getting better, you know, every month and every year. But when you have just one operator who has a monopoly, there's less of an incentive to kind of push the envelope. To. You know, bring your, your, your newest and best innovations to this market. You might, because it might be expensive to do it. You might, you know, do it in another market where you're more motivated to do so. That's the reason why you have to.
So I gotta ask.
I'm not voting. I said this earlier. Had you been number one in the list instead of number three, would you be in my office or here in front of city council saying, add a second will be so much better because the market will make us?
I mean, probably not. I mean, to be honest with you, and the reason is this, the RFP anticipated having an exclusive operator. We submitted a proposal that anticipated that we would be the exclusive operator. And I think if Bird were chosen as the exclusive operator, we might do a better job at it. Because, I mean, given our experience and kind of living up to our commitments in this community, it was probably a lower risk option to choose Bird. If you're going to do an exclusive. So no, I doubt we'd be in your office saying, if we had won an exclusive, you should have two. But that wasn't my decision, right? The city decided to release an RFP that anticipated.
I appreciate your candor.
The monopoly, right?
Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Yeah, if I might. Jason?
Yes, Jason.
Jason, thank you. First question, why not spin if we're going to do two? They were ranked second.
Why not spin? I mean, a lot of the reasons that are set forth in our bid protest and the reasons we thought that our application or proposal was mis-scored. It puts us ahead of spin too, if you took all of that into account. Spin, I mean, I'll note with spin. I think they had the second highest score for the financial commitment to the city. And we, we had the best one, actually by far the best one. I think we committed to something like $21 million of.
I think, I think that's, we don't, we don't need to go into. All of that. I think you answered the council member's question. He has a second question.
Oh, sure. I guess the second part of the answer to that is just that, you know, spin's not here appealing. I mean, the more practical answer.
Did you have a, did you have a second? No? Okay. Council President, just want to make sure since I'm not seeing you. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, so now it's not a public hearing. We've heard everybody. That was the rebuttal, and so this matter is before council. Oh.
To my right, there might be one question for staff.
Oh, sure. Oh, yeah, you can ask questions of staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to follow up on this question about the decision to move to one and maybe just a response on. The argument on better competition with having more than one provider. Could you articulate the staff's evaluation of that? And the reasons why the city decided to choose one?
Sure, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, and Bree, I'd just say, because that was a policy discussion when some of the council members weren't here, like going into more depth, if, if you feel the need is fine.
Sure, Madam Mayor, Council Member Haney Keith. Right now, the way our code sets it up, we can have a maximum of 1,500 devices. Technically, however many operators get us up to that, as long as they're getting a certain number of rides per day. So that means here we have three providers, each managing their own individual fleets. And as they make those decisions to manage their individual fleets, they're making them, as I kind of said earlier. Placing them based on the highest amount of ridership. When you have one provider, they have one fleet, that's maybe the same size as those three individual fleets. So they're not going to concentrate them the same way as if they were three individual providers. They're going to be able to disperse them. Throughout the city a little bit better. It's going to create more consistency for us if we get a call that says a scooter is knocked over on the sidewalk. We know exactly what scooter that is without putting the burden on whoever saw it to say like, oh, it has this license plate number. It was a Lime device, it was a Bird device, it was whatever kind of device. We know that's going to be Bird, we know it's going to be Lime, whoever it is. And if there's a situation where we're seeing perpetual problems with parking, we know exactly who the offender is. We know exactly who it is that needs to be held accountable. And to that end, by shifting to one provider, we're now replacing our section of code that allows us to license three with a contract. That will hold them accountable to do these things. So for all these reasons, you know, simplified communication, more accountability, we believe, is the reason why we would be able to affirm one provider. But also, we believe in the content of this RFP, it would change the arguments substantially if we had said in the RFP, we want to pick two. Versus we want to pick one, I think that would have changed what people are willing to offer if they knew they had competition in the market.
Thank you. Further questions of staff? Okay.
Madam Mayor, there's a motion and order. And if the attorney says we need to reframe this, I'm ready. So just. I move to deny the appeal of RFP 23078.
Second.
We have a motion, a second and a nod from the attorney. Discussion?
Yeah, so first of all. I love market competition. I think it drives innovation. I think it's really important. You probably won't find anybody on this dais more driven by market competition than me. But we, as a council, made the decision to do one vendor for the purpose of broad geographic opportunity. So I live in West Boise, and I know that if we have one vendor, we're going to get more service in West Boise. Because there's going to be an obligation to service the city as a whole versus a rush to downtown where there's a lot more people and there's a lot more opportunity. So I appreciate that argument, and it speaks to me. But the reason that I think we need to deny this appeal is based on one thing. And that is. The reason that we have government RFPs is to take out personal prejudice and decision-making. That is it. It's to be as blind as possible. So when we do that, the time to say, hey, you are not focusing on the right thing is not after the scoring is done, it's before. And I think what happened here is because there's that phrase that says the best interest of the city. There was a roll the dice and like, we'll, we'll see, well, our experience will definitely be the best interest of the city. But that's a value judgment. It's a value judgment based on the people that, that did the criteria. So the time to protest is to be very specific about what the value system is in community engagement and all these other things. I do think our, our process could be strengthened because I do think it's a value judgment that could ultimately lead to more protests with RFPs. But. The RFP was listed as it was, and it, it was judged accordingly. And to come back now and say. You didn't judge the right things, that was, that time was, was three days after, not now.
Madam Mayor. Go for it.
I think it was. It doesn't matter. Madam Mayor. I am going to join the motion, and here's why. It's an appeal, so we have a standard, and we have to find that the decision was arbitrary, capricious or unreasonable. And so I'd go through each of your arguments under that standard that our code requires. The first argument was some version of our history and community involvement wasn't considered. Sufficiently or wasn't considered sufficiently in each element or the like. It's a legal argument if. The criteria, the evaluation criteria should have included it, but didn't. But you had a deadline to make that argument and it's passed. It's a factual argument if you're arguing you didn't consider our history enough. Or our history should lead to conclusions about their credibility. So on a factual question, I have to ask, did they, were they arbitrary in not thinking about it? Well, it's not in the criteria, so it's not arbitrary. Were they capricious or at a whim? But they worked really hard and evaluated everything, and was it unreasonable to take their statements at face value? I don't think it was. I do think they tested it. On the specific scoring, it's kind of the same for me. You had weighted criteria in a committee and there were. You had weighted criteria in a committee, and there were outliers, people who evaluated things very differently. There were short and tall measurements, as you might say, on the criteria. But that was true of all the applicants, and that's the whole point of having a group or a committee. It weights out to an average, and particularly telling for me as to whether they were unreasonable or arbitrary or capricious, is that even on all the, on all the points, you never missed by more than one and a half points. Now, they're weighted, so it shakes out differently, but you came close. Everybody came close on everything. So I don't see anything that leaps out as arbitrary or unreasonable. And then the final piece about, oh, there's two pieces. The final piece about Lime's proposal lacking elements that were in the RFP, you know, that might be true. It's hard to tell. But we expressly reserved the discretion to waive elements of a proposal if we needed to, to get to what we thought was the best one. So not unreasonable to waive it, right? And then finally, on, there should be two or there should be one. The council made a policy decision last fall to go to one. And so it's almost by definition not unreasonable to follow the council's guidance.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Bajin stole every single one of my talking points for clarification on those, so great job. We do appreciate good partnership. We appreciate your support in the community. We appreciate you sending three folks out here. And we appreciate your partnership as well, the stuff that you're doing. That's something I think that we love to see as council folks and our community as a whole is direct involvement there. And so that's something we sure hope to see going forward. So thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to add a couple of things to the conversation. I think that A, the RFP process was good. I, when we were having this policy discussion months ago about whether we go from a model that has a lot of market competition where folks are incented to do different things to address the market, to one where we select one vendor, I was frankly, a little bit wary. I did a lot of reading on how that actually gets us closer to the things that we've been asking for for years that none of our vendors have really been providing to our community. It's been a lot of frustration that's gotten us here to where we're now going to a single vendor model where we'll have a little bit more control, a little bit closer partnership to get what we need out of micro mobility in the city. Because I think micro mobility is really important. It's a great way for folks to get around out of cars. It helps us accomplish our climate goals. You know, there's all kinds of reasons why we want this. But an RFP is an RFP. And we had folks score. They did so fairly. We have no reason to determine that that was arbitrary or capricious. And I just want to say, I think that this has really shown a couple of companies that have some different strategies in going to market. We have one company, Bird. I can, I've engaged with you all for years now. You have a lot of proactive government relations folks and do a lot of sponsorships, have a lot of partnerships, and I think that that shows. But I didn't really see it bear out in performance on your core mission of providing micro mobility around the city. And that's what the RFP was getting at, is how do we actually accomplish our goals for micro mobility all around Boise, connecting different modes of transportation? And so I would say, a lot of what was said was correct. A lot of community engagement, that's wonderful. We appreciate it. But that strategy was not what we were looking for here. So I appreciate the appeal. I think it's been a good conversation, but I'll be supporting the motion.
That's everybody. All right. Clark, will you call the roll?
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Haney Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Weddings.
Yes.
Bajin.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Okay.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Host?
All right, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.